Should we get that?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce to be one member of the community member. My last is Tom Wright. Joe Lennox. I'm looking. It was Kelly Cochran. Introduce the town staff. Laura Graham. Director of Development. John Wenonborn. For officer. Dan. Jury. Building Department. Photo Officer. Ever so popular. Perk of the board. I do the emergency exits you have one to my labs. Because right back room and then the one that you guys came in. Test the meeting. Doctor according to the rules of procedures. It was only worth a few. That would on February twenty seven. Twenty twenty three. Assuming what I was saying for March middle minutes. Yes, I read it. Stay something down here. They had a motion to approve it.
Motion. Outside.
The motion. Set. All in favor?
Aye.
There were no. Legal notice published. That I like to continue. Public hearings. From ZB zero three zero one dash two three. Our family trust. Six one seven six hundred five. Arlington, New York. Four two five. Yeah, we're discussing an area variance to the provisions contained in chapter one sixty five attachment one. Setting one pharmacy town code. We have to create thirty five. And we have a bedroom lot with thirty feet. The town code requires a building lot to play a hundred and twenty five feet. The proposed lot would be part of the proposed this summer. There's the lot number R five dash A. Tax ID number twenty nine point one three dash one. Dash five point one zero two. Lot number R dash five dash B. Tax ID number forty nine point one three dash one. That five point two zero three. On the peasants crossing seven. These three proposed lots. They're located along the west side of the peasants crossing. The mother of the peasants crossing subdivision track. All lots are resurfaced RS dash twenty five. Those mentioned per. Application. New information.
Yes. You ordered them. Yes. Good evening, Daniel Brennan or Davis and Fain. On behalf of the applicant. We provided the town with some additional documentation. I don't know if you have copies of it, but I've got some additional copies of the memory that more of like them. And I'll also leave a few out here for for members of the public as well. And. There's actually one other piece of information. It's it's not really a substantive change, but I know there was some some confusion about what exactly who they're proposing since. Our prior renderings of the proposed subdivision showed showed the outlines of buildings. So. This current application, we're not proposing that any new single family homes be built on the property. We're not in fact proposing that anything would be built at all. We're simply proposing an area variance to allow a subdivision of land, which would allow the property to be sold. So what I'd like to submit to the board for clarification is is the proposed subdivision plan. It's just slightly modified for clarification and does not show any any proposed houses or buildings on any of the properties. Because none are in fact currently proposed. And I'll I've got some extra copies for members of the public as well. If you'd like to take a look. I'll leave them here.
We'll we'll rehearse.
So the the first document that I handed out is a copy of our supplemental letter. And there are two documents attached to that to that letter. The middle exhibit F and exhibit G. Exhibit F is a letter. To the board from a real license real estate broker, finding on the impact of the proposed subdivisions would have on property values in the neighborhood. So exhibit F. Is is the letter from Mr. Credit Post. And in this letter, he provides the opinion that that the additional lot, the third lot, the middle lot that requires the area varies. Is is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and would not likely have an adverse impact on the neighborhood, including on the values, the property values in the neighborhood. Label exhibit G is the letter from Mr. Legret from Midland Appraisal Associates. Mr. Legret is a licensed appraiser and he has provided a determination based on his thirty three thirty nine years of grateful experience in the area. That the proposed subdivision would not negatively impact the the marketability or the value of of the other lots, the existing homes in the neighborhood at all. So we've provided this proof in response to some of the comments that we heard from members of the public and the board at the last public hearing. Do you think that this that these two exhibits address those concerns? Finally, I'd like to go through some of the issues that we have with the proposed draft resolution. Because I I think that for the record, we need to draft so much factual inaccuracy that are that are contained in the draft resolution. I know the board hasn't voted on it yet, but I think some of the decisions are are important to address whether or not you plan to to adopt this resolution or not. And and the the first, the first thing to clarify is that the Fowler Family Trust is the applicant today. Jim Fowler is not an applicant before the board. He's not proposing or requesting any area variances from the board. And Fowler does not own the property. And the Fowler Family Trust, the applicant in today's application did not own the property in nineteen ninety eight, when the property was originally subdivided or or most subdivided into the existing lots that that we have in in the neighborhood today. In fact, the Fowler Family Trust did not even exist in nineteen ninety eight. So any discussion about whether or not the applicant failed to comply with conditions of a variance that was approved in nineteen ninety eight would be completely irrelevant. In fact, I would say that that would be both arbitrary and egregious to consider whether or not the applicant failed to comply with the conditions, since the applicant was not being leaving any assistance at the time that those variances may or may not have been approved. I don't have any direct knowledge of that. The other, the other issue that that I wanted to address is we provided a revised subdivision plan. Again, there's discussion in this in this proposed draft resolution about the location of 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 homes, about the location of accessory structures. No structures are being proposed. No structures are part of this application. And so it would be improper for this board to consider where any of those structures might be. We are entitled to subdivide the land to sell it to someone that can that can decide to sit on it and not not build on it in perpetuity. Or until the town board decides to amend the zoning code. And so it's not proper for this board to consider whether or not any structure that might be built in the future would would comply with the code, since we haven't proposed them yet. One other issue that that I wanted to address is is the fact that we, with our initial application, we provided you was an example of other flag lots or lots that meet the definition of a of a flag lot under the code that that are already existing in the town. So we've provided you with evidence of those flag lots to meet the first legal standard, which is whether or not the proposed variance will have, well, as in keeping the existing character of the neighborhood or whether it's likely to create an undesirable change. We're not saying that the existence of these other flag lots creates precedent that this board needs to needs to adhere to. We're only saying that there are existing flag lots, not just in the town of Farmington, but in this particular neighborhood. And so by creating new flag lots, we're not changing anything in the neighborhood. I would argue that we're certainly not creating an undesirable change in the neighborhood, but because there are already numerous flag lots, there is no change at all. This is already a neighborhood characterized by flag lots. And I I think that that's an important decision to make, because I know that that this draft revolution brings up the fact that no new flag lots have been created since since the new definition of flag lot was was inserted into the code. And while we appreciate that fact, it's it doesn't go to prove whether or not this had an undesirable change in the condition of the neighborhood. Under the third legal standard, whether or not the requested variance is substantial. It notes the percentage of change from the minimum lot width that we're requesting. And while I don't argue with that, I think we stated on the record at the last hearing that the applicant is is more than happy to reconfigure the proposed subdivision to move those lot lines around. We have three hundred feet of of lot fronted. And so what we could do is we could make all of the lots equal. We could have a three hundred or a one hundred foot lot fronting on all three lots instead of the proposed configuration. This board could adopt a a condition that that the applicant changed the proposed subdivision to provide one hundred feet of of lot width for for each of the three proposed lots. We wouldn't object to that, and I think that would be a reasonable condition. So if the concern of the board is that what we're proposing is substantial, because the center lot has too narrow of a of a lot fronted, we're able to change that, you're able to change that. And so I don't think that that would be a reason to deny the application. We certainly would would consent to a a condition that that changed configuration. And with that, I think I've addressed all of the issues that that we wanted to raise tonight, but I would like to take questions in the board or members of all of that matter.
Are you gonna, so you're talking about a hundred feet? Are you gonna propose? Or come up some drawings for that for us to see?
We we absolutely could, if if you'd like. Actually, our engineer has already created them. I don't have them here with me. There was some discussion internally before we made this application of which configuration would be more amenable to the board. The applicant doesn't care what the configuration was. This was the one that we initially proposed. We thought that it would be it would be the best configuration that was most likely to meet the area variance standard. But we're more than happy to provide you with an alternative that you could that you could adopt.
Maybe all side by side, no.
Yes.
Right, right. What we have was presented to us. As it stands today.
I would agree, but the application in front of you is for an area variance to basically a variance on the minimum lot width. Right? And so you could say as a condition of your approval that all three of these, the most that you're able to grant is a one hundred foot minimum lot width for each of the three lots. We we would not object to that. That'd be a reasonable condition that we just comply with. So I I certainly understand your point that, you know, the thing maybe this is a separate application, but I don't think that we need to look at it that way, given the relief that we're requesting. We're not saying you want a specific subdivision, right? We still have to go to the planning work for subdivision tool. We're just asking for your permission to get a variance from the minimal lot with requirement. So you can you can approve that however you like.
Yeah, that application had changed. Because it's specifically.
I mean, so they applied for minimum lot width based on their site plan. They get submitted a new site plan with different lot widths. Obviously, we would tie this applicant like to a specific lot. We would have just give them. You know, this is the smallest you could go, because then they could do that with every lot in there. So normally, we would tie it to this site plan. So since this is the only site plan we have, I don't think, you know.
For a move kind of the one eight hundred and twenty five feet. So it would be three. Lots that went all three in the under by twenty five. Who for?
New information please.
I have just a couple of questions. It's been worked.
Maureen, you have to go over there, sorry.
Yeah, I just I just have a couple of questions.
Sure. So my name's Maureen Despensa. I live at three seven Pezzins Crossing. Which was directly across from a lot. A question. Well. They're saying that they're they're not proposing any building or anything like that, that they're suddenly wanting for three lots right now instead of two. If you're not proposing homes, I guess my question is, what else could be built on there? Why else would you subdivide, right? And. Mr. Fowler had said all of us, like, asking for our input when this was almost starting, wanting to know what our thoughts were on going for two lots and three lots. To a neighbor who I don't know if she's online tonight. He had responded that would be a third block. He and his wife were gonna build fourteen hundreds square foot. An initial application. I think I gave that to Sarah, which is far below. The rest of the neighborhood, which I think most of the homes are what about two thousand square feet or more, right? So that would be a concern for us residents, because we want to, again, it's all about maintaining the value and integrity of the neighborhood. And I guess my second question is, did any of you folks get a chance to drive our neighborhood since the meeting? So you 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 see why we're we have a few concerns. I know that your attorney, he's saying we have flag lots in our neighborhood, but I thought at the last meeting, it had been established, there aren't flag lots in our neighborhood. There's some crazy side street behind the neighborhood that I guess, maybe by definition, I'm not a zoning person. Is that what you're considering flag lots?
I'm gonna assume that that's what they're doing, but I don't know. Those are the only ones in the area.
Look at the peasants crossing development as a whole. And on a final note, you guys were so much to me the last time. I don't want to dabble up here all night here, but I. I read your condition for variances. And I don't see how this application qualifies, because they have to meet so many conditions. And I guess my biggest one goes back to the hardship clause. And maybe Mr. Fowler wasn't owner of the specific land, but his family was. So. When you're claiming hardship, it's hard for, I guess, our neighborhood to swallow the fact that there isn't some ownership in this, because whether it's willed land in or whatever, it's it's still family owned. They it's someone in their family owned this land, consciously made the decision to keep that lot for whatever their reasons. And now we potentially are going to suffer the consequences, that they couldn't have absolutely any lot in that neighborhood. I wish I could come up with more, but I honest to God, I picked this apart. Very dusted, not be a lawyer I could do. So I I hope I hope you'll consider the impact on on my people here and before you make a decision. And thanks for for your time. I appreciate it.
And also the audience here.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brett Boom. I live at sixty two fifty Pezzins Crossing. I'm I'm next word of this lot. Maureen, some points that I wanted to cover, but just stuff that his lawyer brought up that I want to ask about. My I I take a question as you saw, is what are the variances that were originally part of the conditions of the dividing of the neighborhood? Even though the land is associated with our trust, wouldn't the variances be based with? I don't know. But.
My apologies, if we could have you speak a little bit more into the mic, Mr. Chairman, there's some issues online here. Okay, sorry, that was our side chair.
So he was asking, does if I get this right, the variance that was in the following year now went to the trust as a change means? Stays with the.
Variance runs with the list.
Right, so the variances are all in place. And so it's not to mean like they're trying to say a variance, you know, five, because the land has changed from an individual members and family truck. Something like that. It's not Mr. Fowler back there who's asking for it specifically, but the grant to the article plays and sort of sounded like they were trying to say maybe that. I could be wrong. I'm I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. Um, now they're they're also trying to be very specific. They're trying to divide the land fast line, and they're not tying it to building structures, which is Maureen pointed out, and we all saw the letter and you seen the letter. That was part of the letter. Two houses on big lots and their lot, their house on the back lot. And now they're backpedaling. So what would be if if we move forward, we allow them to divide the land, it's just property just land. Somebody's gonna buy that land, but they're gonna put a house up. How do we continue to be able to protect our neighborhood? And the way the neighborhood's been built, the way it was originally structured to be built in the future, is there a process for that? Where we can, you know, we would be able to preview what houses are being built and make sure that they're built the proper way. I'm gonna have to worry about sand off on the edge of my property. Okay, you divide the last hundred foot whips, that takes a lot of land away on the edge of my property where they're possibly want to have a a variance or approval, but their their house closer to my house. Now, we bought a house. It's a nice house, a large house, a very large lot. That's why I bought it. And several people talked about that in the last meeting. We see these houses, these neighborhoods go up, we want to take houses on small lots, that fine, that's what you want. That's not what our neighborhood was established for. It was established as a decent house on a big a big lot. My neighborhood, I got three dogs, so we have a big house around here. Hey, if you drove by and heard my dog parking, that's when we drive by. I thought that, but um, that's what we want. We want to be able to have that big lot. We want to have space out back. We want to have space. Next door. And and that's the way the neighborhood was planned out. And this isn't the same badass, but in the neighborhood. So while a realtor is lying inside, or like saying it's not going to change the value, I believe it would, if you want to put up a trust on the money. And then after ten years, the value hasn't gone down, because we're gonna impact dividing those lots and building out in the future. And if it does bring value down, when that trust money comes up, I'm fine with that. But otherwise, we won't worry about. Um, I I have a question, a realtor saying the value's not gonna go down when we're dividing one lot and three lots. That is gonna happen. Um. And and I think if Maureen allowed it, but A, they say they were gonna build their house. B, they said the plan was to build houses in all three lots. Um, I believe the variance carry over, and I'm very concerned about the process. If you do divide it, if you divide it, how do we make sure that those houses will stay in compliance with the rest of the neighborhood? How was how our houses have all been built? That's all I have. I appreciate you listening.
We are here.
All right. What is the road frontage you have? Excuse me, what's the road frontage?
I can tell you off the bat, right? And I know it's much wider than that. You have sort of a pie shape.
Comments from the. What's your name? Is anyone? Nothing?
Opposed to plumb? Operations and decisions. You made a motion to waive the beginning of this. Does anyone in the audio check to that? No, but here not anyone online.
Confirmation. Don't worry.
I just like to make a clarification point. Okay, you have closed the public hearing tonight. You have sixty two days to make a decision. If you feel you received new information tonight. Whether it's a map that was submitted. Or whether it was the applicant telling you he would provide you an alternative map that he wanted you to consider. Do you really think you ought to be acting on this tonight? Should you wait, get that information, consider it, and then make the decision?
Are you talking about if they want to just divide the land in three? Three lots with a four fringe? And a map? That would show that?
That was one of the alternatives that he discussed here tonight. I don't know whether you have a map. Even if you do have a map, your rules procedures say that you don't consider acting on something you receive the night of a public hearing. So there's a rule right there, reason to not act on this tonight. You may also want to review the public hearing record now that you have had the additional comments from both parties. And take that into consideration. And you decide. And and continue it to your next meeting. Which is. That's because you were asked to switch with the town board, because that Tuesday is grievance day. Not that anybody has any grievance with their tax bill that they just got. Right, I just want everybody to understand why it's a different date. Okay, than what our normal date would be.
I think we we did close the public here, correct?
Yes.
Yes, you did do that.
He he moved to close the public.
Yes.
So you have sixty two days from tonight. Now you could make a decision at the next meeting, or you make a decision following that, because you'd still be, I believe, within the sixty two days of the math is where it should be.
Oh.
May fifteenth. Well, you've got a motion to continue to that meeting. Around.
You have a motion, but you need a second.
They had a motion before that, that waived the reading and the current. Yeah. Resolution, so they have to do something with that one first.
Well, you can lay that one over.
Sorry, I didn't put that.
So.
They approved that one.
Todd, you made a motion to waive the reading. And to approve the resolution as written. But it sounds like you guys are going to go in a different direction. So but there's a motion, that motion has to be dealt with first, and then.
Well, I didn't approve it. I didn't.
I I don't know if somebody seconded that or not. Okay. Okay.
Well, nobody seconded what I did on the motion. No, I really did a motion. Right, so I'll be going.
So wait in the poll reading that.
Now I want to. There. Right, I want to go back to motion. Move. Wow, let the other information.
Who else? Who else?
Are you satisfied?
I just wanted to make sure that both motions were taken care of.
It's a roll call. All favor. Hi. In the votes? Take the next information. Time for you guys. Thank you. We're more than matters. Development update?
Yes, um. One of the things that that I'm working on is updating. Chapter nine of the town code, which is entitled Boards, Committees, and Commissions. And um. One of the things that I'm finding there is there's some. Boards that haven't been identified in chapter nine with the other boards. And you're one of them. So, um. We're going to be drafting up another article to that chapter and presenting it to you. It's it's. Not gonna be any surprises, just. Formatting the fact that you're one of the boards that we have here in the town. And as such, here's your duties and responsibilities. So that's clear to anybody looking at the code. That we do have a CBA. This is what they do. Uh, some communities zoning board of appeals issues and special use permits. Not in this community. The planning board has done that for years. So minor things like that that. Get involved. The other thing. That uh. We're looking at is next Thursday night, not this Thursday. But May four, yeah, in this room and online. We will have uh a public information meeting. On the um. Transportation Alternatives Program Sidewalk Project. It's two point two million dollar project. Has identified a number of sub areas. Where sidewalks are missing, where we want to infill them. And make connectivity so that people can walk. Between parks and and their their home. They can walk to the grocery store or they can walk to the neighborhood. Whatever it may be. Um, it's phase one of a two-phase project. We'll see how much we can get accomplished with. The rate, the monies that we have been allocated. Well, two point two million dollars sounds like an awful lot of money. Uh, I wish we could use it all for concrete. But unfortunately, we can't. So we have to design plans. We have to have those plans reviewed by the public, by the state agencies. They have to go out to competitive bid and please. No more. Supply chain interruptions or inflation. Because that's just messing up our our plans altogether here, people. So that that'll be online or uh in person and. I think you'll find it interesting. There is going to be a pedestrian bridge across Beaver Creek there on forty one. Uh, similar to the other two pedestrian bridges we have. I think that there is also uh going to be some interest here on. Where this project ultimately goes and ends up. The other thing I wanted to just point out to everybody is that we still. I have not had any movement on the part of two developers over there on Route ninety six. One being the Farmington Market Center or where Tops is. And the other one being the neighbor next door who. Wanted to shift the new driveway and new signal onto his property. And now wants. Other things, other amenities provided. So. It's a stalemate, so to speak. We'll see where it ends up. I think that's about it for now that that I am.
I have to say it again, even though it's not gonna change. We have an open click for the board position. Sarah's just stuck here with us. Um, also, as you stated earlier, the May meeting was changed to May fifteenth. Because the town board had to change their meeting to your Monday night because they have. The grievance day on the normal town board meeting night, so everything had to get moved around. But other than that, I got nothing else.
Um, I do have one other thing and and that is on your way out, take a look at the bulletin board. There's a photograph there that you'll see maybe some of your neighbors. Uh, the conservation board has uh. Uh, an adopt the highway. Uh, section of three thirty two. And they were out over the Saturday picking up litter, trash, tires. Would believe what they find. And uh, there's a picture of them, their names. It's great that that we have a board that's doing this and we also have. Volunteers in the community that are coming out and helping. So kudos to the conservation board. I'll let you guys know when the next adopt the Halloween, so you can help too.
I've never gone through this before. So they submitted new information to me then. And most of the public. We just got it, like we just got it. Going, I'm questioning, so now it's always doesn't have. And to be very new relatives, people are gonna go. And have a feeling to lose time, am I right?
Is there?
Well, because I.
This is called for this meeting, I mean, they got.
So then, so. Well, let's say that for whatever reason, people choose to approve this request. Um. Then we would get to appeal, right? You would go on to. I guess the defense of it, yeah. And I just try and stay in the process, I thought.
Yeah, unfortunately, the public meeting was closed. Tonight and um. We can't take any more testimony on the application.
So we just have to wait for the outcome, right? And then. But then we pull a appeal.
Absolutely.
And that's the same thing for them too. So it's not just you. They can't give any more input either. The board will make their decision. And then whoever does whatever they do afterwards.
Trying to figure out, we're like, we're a feel a lot. That's okay.
Yeah, we're we're not gonna get any more letters from any realtors. We're not gonna get any more letters from any appraisers. What we are gonna get is one map that shows how three lots with, what did he say, a hundred foot front?
Yeah.
Would be able to be put on that property. Then that. Is us staff.
Right.
The opportunity to review and compare it to what the setbacks would be and what the size homes. The maximum size homes that would be alone.
Oh, thank you. Then I'd be as the board can ask staff the town question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that. Well, thanks for all your time.
You're welcome. Have a good night.